So the October 22 meeting is called to order. Got roll call. All four members present. And the first items, as we look at our agenda.
I'll make a motion through the agenda. I'll second.
Your on and I.
Your on.
Your on.
Motion carries with four. So looking to the October 27 agenda and with Steve Thompson here from V and K, we will first talk about stormwater, right?
Yeah, so there's two things I invited Steve to spend this evening with us regarding. Couple of things who sort of reared their heads since we even put the agenda. The first being, do you recall the metals issue we had? The metals proposal that we evaluated was actually last January or February. So it's been a while. So the last quasi decision that council made was to wait till we opened the bids on wastewater plants to kind of drag people. Obviously, that happened in June while the world was burning down. But the DNR called this week and they went, let's know they were coming to town to do some inspecting and they would be happy to review our whole season procedures that we have gotten in place for metals violations. Great. So I know we hadn't formally decided what direction we were going to go with that. I reached out and tapped Steve for the assist. I want to get some information on how they would recommend or attacking this problem. Thankfully, the DNR was coming actually to inspect to go out to Camso and it sounds like that went pretty well. Jim and Steve were on the screen when Matt kind of reported on their visit. They still would like to see some documentation on how we would plan to handle any future violations of either of our industrial use or MDM or Camso just to essentially make sure we're still moving down the process. So that's how I took it. He did say something interesting though that Steve, she made sure to mention that she was there. I don't remember how Matt said that. We, it's our responsibility. She wasn't there to come down on Camso because there were the DNR pushing down on us and it's our job to push it down on Camso. There's not a direct enforcement line from DNR. So she made a point of bringing that up, which was likely not an accident. So we have probably kept the key in successfully as long as we can. We swept some time out of it, so I don't feel too bad about it. But he, I asked him to come talk to you about the way that they would choose to approach it and then the council needs to give some direction on how we want to handle this and essentially probably who we want to go forward with because it's time to start, I think. Because now we're under a year from when the new plan will come online. So we got to start figuring out where some of this metal is coming from. So want to dive right in?
I do. I will. And if there's something I didn't, I don't cover, let me talk about the second and we can break it up. We have three active projects doing the same very thing going on in Iowa right now. Attauma and Creston and Carroll. All of them are a little bit different and so they require a different approach. Our president Forrest Hallrich is our lead wastewater guy and he, I spent about an hour with him this morning talking about how he would attack this. He, we talked about it a couple of different ways and he actually recommended we go both. And one is, you know, there's some very specific metals that you guys are being, are in violation of. Acmium was one, silver is another one and molybdenum, which there's a much longer, more difficult thing for that. He states there's a pretty narrow band of potential contributors for those particular things. Silver is pretty elusive to try to find. You'd not be surprised to find that a lot of times it's a dentist that is the contributor for that because the limits on that are very small. It doesn't take months to trigger. But what he would recommend is that we first respond to the DNR, give them the plan that they want and we try to get as much time to complete this as possible. But then start investigating those few likely contributors of these metals. And, you know, in my experience, I've done a few of these myself and then other type of contributors, most people want to comply. They're not even aware that they're creating an issue for you and you can very simply resolve it. Sometimes though, people aren't aware, they're distrusting, they dread hiding things. So you've kind of got to approach it from a practical standpoint and be aware that that's a possibility. And more often than not, there's generally some pretty simple process change for them, how they clean, when they clean. For instance, you know, in a metal shop, I gave this example today, sweep before you hold down the floor. Sometimes it's that simple because it's that fine line between making a violation of that and they're more than happy to do that. But it can be very tough sometimes to find the one. If you're fortunate enough to find the big contributor right out of the chute, problem solved. You take care of that. Sometimes you've got to keep peeling behind you to find that. So that would be the first way, is double approach, is to try to find those contributors. The second part is with you guys getting a new treatment plan. The process will, those men intended to remove some of those things, it will. And there's a lot of good literature out there that says process acts in your case oxidation disc will remove so many pounds or so much percentage of that. And so we can work backwards from what's your limit and see how much we anticipate that process removing. And then on the front end, say, well, you know, you're not putting that much in, so this process will probably solve your problem or load and then we have to go reduce it someplace else. But a pretty good level of confidence, we can predict whether the new plant will fix your problem or not. And if it doesn't, well, then we've got to go back to try and figure out what it's at. And then we certainly will have to verify through testing once your plant's in place or if the calculations and assumptions were correct. In the end, we've got to get that out so that you can want to comply with your permit but also be able to land apply your sludge. So it's kind of a two-pronged attack. It's not easy to sit here and say, this is what we'll do because sometimes you start peeling things back and you find something else. But it's just one of those things, you almost have to just start and see where it kind of takes you. But, you know, in a very general sense, the process I laid out is how we can go about it.
So right now, the way we test is more general, right? We just do manholes in certain areas and we say it's this person. When actually, it's more than just one group going into it, one business?
Yeah, I think they do a lot of testing at the lift station sites because it's easy for them to get to, but there's just so many.
Yeah, so is there any way that we can get more accurate testing?
Yep. And that's part of our plan, when we put a plan together, it's kind of look at your system and see if there's that one manhole that this contributor is 75% of the flow and there's others and you can make some assumptions. Sometimes you have to put in a sampling port, sometimes. Sometimes within the building, there's a, say a clean out in the plumbing before access the building and that would be the point, but we have to have, you know, the owner working with us on that.
And this ordinance would give us that leverage to kind of help us in the building?
Yep. So you've got a couple of different things with the ordinance. You need overarching ordinance that basically says, hey, we need to have pre-treatment agreements in place when they exist and here's what we'll do to you if you can't comply with them. Because as Whitney said, you guys have a permit holder as far as the DNR and EPA is concerned. All of these industries, you're granting a permit. They're kind of tagged onto yours. So they won't call them, they're going to call you and if you're in violation, they will find you. But you need a mechanism to be able to find that contributor. So you've got the big ordinance and you'll have individual treatment agreements with various things needed to be in place. And those are all very individual because you just don't know their process, you don't know what they're putting in your waste area. So those are all custom, but you've got a lot of stuff to agree upon. We agreed to test this frequency and if we don't, this is the thing. So pretty common, pretty standard, but also very individual.
So when we figure out the oxidation portion of the treatment plan, should we take in consideration the future development that's going to have over line lagoons and everything? Because there could be more machine, who knows what's going to go out there?
So we talked about that today. And so right now, you've got a bunch of industries in town. You guys are industry friendly, there's nothing wrong with that. You kind of put your arms around them and say, we've got to deal with you guys in one way because you're already here. Then you put an ordinance in place for everything new that comes so that you're in a better position to handle them properly to be compliant. So you've kind of got two different groups that you think.
And you did mention like those external sampling ports would be a good idea, a good thing to ensure quieter for additional industries. So that way our guys can just walk up, pop full sample without.
I would imagine 90% of businesses have those cleanup ports right before it exits the building.
Yeah, but it'd be nice to have them outside the building, on your property or someplace in the east, so that you could do that. But yeah, I would even probably say it's higher than 90%. Most of the plumbers will put that in there.
Yeah, so new construction, put a manhole outside, might go through and then it goes to the main and then we test it right there.
Yep. And some of those treatment agreements usually require them to put a sample in. You've got to sample and send us those or our guys have the right to come and get that sample. Sometimes you have to do that. Like if you were to have a processing plant of some sort, we absolutely require it.
So then Camso, the solution was a better solution this time? The DNR was more happier with them cleaning the stages and?
They were happy, mad and shit they were happy with the progress that you've been made. There was no indication of non-compliance other than not having a plan.
That's good.
Yeah.
That's good. Last time I didn't pass the law.
Quite the naughty list.
Well, I'll know this to you, the next step from the DNR would be to put you on an administrative order which says you shall buy X and you're not there yet. And then the step after that is when lines come about. So you're kind of a step away from the quasi naughty list and hopefully you never make it to the one that costs you money.
We don't call that.
No, this is one of those things that this process, it just takes time. And I was telling Whitney and Mayor today, when you go, just start it and finish it because it could just drag on and things change and then you kind of go back to the beginning and you almost just need to be focused on completing it and get to that point and it should be done. And obviously, if you do a thorough job, you'll have that ordinance in place and as new industries come on, you'll have all the tools to be able to do it all right.
Add to the different metals or whatever, if something becomes specific.
Yeah, you keep it general enough so that it's basically, hey, you need to be compliant with our permit. So if our permit changes, so is theirs.
So at this point, do we need to go out and hire a firm to help us create the ordinance?
Yep. Yes. Because this.
There's two things, right? We need to develop the ordinance specific to our needs, to a point where we can pass it through one of these meetings. And then we also need to start the investigation into where the metals are coming from. Two related but different independent activities that need to run in parallel.
I think we're going to need the ordinance to help with the investigation.
Again, interrelated.
Do we work with the businesses to set up the ordinance or do we just set the ordinance up?
I mean, I think at this point, we enjoy a super cooperative relationship with MDM and Camso, who are only SAs for now. Not to say there might not be another one hiding in there and we talked about that, but like we shouldn't, I don't think we need a ton more. So I mean, I think that there's an opportunity to work with them. The general over our two ordinance, so I don't know that they would have a whole lot of input. That's going to be more legal speak in terms of our statute of authority to let you dump or not dump X, Y, Z. But yeah, when we get into the agreements, if we're talking numbers, we would absolutely, I think, want to be working closely with them to make sure that it's reasonable. Like he said, we have, we'll have our total number, like our 100%, so then we've got to say, how much do we give MDM, how much do we give Camso, with leaving some, you know, we don't want to shoot our whole lot because if somebody else wants to come build right behind you, we've got to, we want to have some limit, some margin for them, but that's all the numbers.
So the molybdenum, that's more of a machine, right?
Yeah. It's a metal.
Yeah, so I've got to believe that it's not just, that's the two. I guess everybody that does machine, the molybdenum is coming up with that.
Yes, and the good thing about the molybdenum, different from our current plan is that like now it's settled down in the sludge because that sludge is like, well, everything's just going to be moving now. There's no, not as much settle out time. So hopefully it'll just stay in the water park and our sludge will.
Well, it just doesn't ever have time to settle out in your sludge, you know, because it keeps going. And it's an interesting constituent because as I was telling these guys, it doesn't show up as a requirement in class one sludge, it doesn't in class two, and then it goes away again, kind of farther down the line. It's also a constituent that has a total load type limit on it. So just for instance, this piece of land, you could only ever put four pounds of it in a lifetime of this land because it's this cumulative type constituent. But it's not nearly as clean as the other ones as far as how to deal with it. The upside is if you have a flow-through plant like you're having, it will just kind of pass down the waste area.
This is kind of a little weird question, but at town our size, after a plant's up and going, how much sludge do you think we produce in a year?
Well, it's actually, at this point, from what I know, an unanswerable question because it really depends on your flow and your biology that's there. But you'll have to land apply a couple of times a year. I mean, you'll have to hold it and land apply it a couple of times a year.
I'm just trying to figure out if we couldn't land apply it, what it's going to cost.
Land a little man over here.
Yeah. A lot, a lot. I mean, do you guys take sludge out there?
But it's $90 a ton. That's why I was curious.
Right, so what you typically do then is you dewater. I mean, so you asked me how much, well, it's hard to say because is it liquid or is it dry? You know, if it's liquid, it's obviously a lot heavier and a lot more volume. You can dry down sludge out of your town, a pretty small quantity, honestly, but you have to invest in some sort of process to dewater.
We did the dewatering pad. Did we end up covering it or not? I don't know if we covered.
Decided to wait on that.
Yeah.
So you probably just let it kind of naturally dewater, which will take it so far, you know, far enough that it becomes a dry product that you can land apply. Or if you're ever going to take it to a landfill and he charges you $90 a ton, you'll want to press the water out of it even more than gravity will just take, which makes it even harder. And then again, it's not a lot. For you guys, I think just a sludge dry bed where you can just set it there, even if it gets rained on, it's still going to dewater itself and be more economical.
Two times a year, so even the winter time until it freeze-dries or dewater?
It's warm. It's pretty warm stuff, so.
It's got a lot going on.
Yep.
That's great.
Actually, pretty quickly, they don't know what sludge or is or was, what's recommended. It's probably in your study, the facility plan that you did, you have. So even if you wanted to page through there, you could probably find it pretty quickly.
Did the DNR give us a timeline on when this has to be done before they start telling us the bad news?
No, I think at this point, it's still, from going back, made it sound, I did not speak to Michelle in secondary, it sounded pretty informal still. They were, I think had that inspection not gone well, probably would have gone a different direction. But I think they're saying, we're actually doing what they want us to do, we just don't actually have to quantify it in terms of.
You will be expected to have it done in front, and I'm just guessing, in a short order after you bring your plant online. So that's what, next September is kind of the substantial completion date? So it's 2021. I bet you by the end of 2022, you need to have that all in place, which seems like a long ways away, but it's not.
So we get any prices on what it's going to cost? Engineering firm helped us put together the plan?
She tried to pin me down. If she knew, you would answer that question. And the answer is, it's really hard to say. I mean, if you tell me, go look here and I find it right away, it doesn't cost you very much at all. If you say, go turn over every rock and keep looking, I don't know, you know, how many rocks are there? And then how difficult is it to get people to comply? You know, for scalability, I'll tell you, the three that we have going right now are somewhere, one, the easy one, kind of in the 10,000 range, we've got very complicated ones around the 30,000 range. But none of them are done because you're still trying to get through them. So it's just so hard to tell you what yours will cost.
But as far as, you have an ordinance put together for us?
Oh, the ordinance is okay. In fact, I'd probably almost do that for you for now because they're.
It's on recording. I got it.
Thanks for recording.
Because they're fairly standard. I mean, the language is pretty standard in there. It's really just giving you guys the authority to enforce it and write specifically for the facilities.
So it's more than just, I'm not sure which piece it would fit in because you've got the ordinance language, then you've got the framework that you're going to use to develop the individual agreements. That's going to be more data-based.
Yep.
And then there's the research to figure out who's currently sending the metals down.
Yep. So a lot of the secondary ones we talked about, the individual ones, it's a negotiation every time. And if you're lucky, you've got mostly local industries here, but if somebody came that had an engineering firm that was working for them and does all these things, it could get a little bit interesting because you're negotiating, how much of that cavity capacity am I buying? Because, you know, and it's just, you're arguing science and those are again, very difficult to predict too, as far as how they're going to go. But I would think, again, with you guys being pretty industry friendly and knowing most of those owners back there, and assuming this is a similar kind of facility would continue to come, I think they'd do all right.
So I think our discharge permit, we had to pay for the sampler and then the water resource recovery system, whatever you want to call it, sewer plant, they made all the maintenance to it.
Yeah.
And then they say that piece of equipment's been for five years. Within five years, expect five.
That's, and that's how I would recommend we have the ordinance, but not all of them will require it. Maybe we just need you to give us a place to put one someday if we need it. But the other two, no, you're going to need to sample. It's a composite sample, 24-hour composite or once a day or, you know, whatever it is. And you've got to provide that and you have a plan to replace it every five years and give our guys the ability to go collect the sample on the sampler. So, you know, that's the kind of the bare minimum and then it's just what's special about that process.
Cement plants don't have any metals in them, do they?
Sewer plants?
Cement plants. They have oils and stuff just from the actual.
Yeah, fly ash, you know, you can sometimes get fly ash in concrete that could have some metals in it.
So just thinking, don't forget about the two that are on the other side of it. Petski, it doesn't work there.
And those, you know, those would be pretty easy to isolate. You know, you could kind of sample, eliminate those and kind of come on in.
There's really just about five other ones over here that I can think of, maybe six. It's interesting about the silver coming from the test.
Yeah. Yep.
There's not a lot of other places that comes from, so.
Photography places, sometimes we'll have some silver. Yeah, there's just not a lot of places in here. You're not plating trailer hitches in silver, you know, it's true. And my president, Joe, looking at the volumes you have, if someone wanted to pay them and had a three-plant, there's about $12,000 of silver coming in there, so.
It's a year's worth of sitting on the pipe.
There's two boats over there. I've got my kids going through that.
You've got enough to run shifts. All right, so that covers the metals discussion.
Yes, so we don't necessarily have to solve this problem tonight, but I did want you guys to hear from, this is, it is what I call, you know, it's a squishy, it's a squishy thing. So I just think it's important that you guys choose the route you're most comfortable with because we don't really know where this road's going to take us. And so I just want to be confident as we're going down and not worried about, you know, what's going on, what they find. Want to make sure we all trust the course we're on.
We'll save this for the most detailed information we've ever gotten on the metals portion. And we've had a couple of conversations about it. We've all kind of left a little up in the air, well, what do we do? You know what I mean? So just to put a little more clarity to it.
Clarity of an unclear situation?
Well, yeah, but it helped out quite a bit.
Yeah, it did. So I guess my last two sentences is, like Whitney should work with the K to get an ordinance put together and do more.
Because it'll be here before you tell it to me. I'm sure you'll put that through. We should do that.
Yeah, well, I think we need, we shouldn't need a motion. I mean, we'll probably, we want to do a PSA probably. Yeah, so that's what we'll, we either can do that with this meeting or the next meeting, depends on how quickly we want to get started on it. But yeah, that'll be the next thing you guys move on, prove an agreement to start the work there.
Yeah, there's nothing in the agenda right now for that, right?
No, it's like, this wasn't really on the radar until Matt said, oh, Monday morning said, guess who? I just got a call. Not usually how we really want this to start, but.
So we could target this for the second meeting in November and that would give us another work session to talk about it too.
Yeah, yeah, if you guys, I mean.
Yeah, we could, I mean, you could work through some more detail, get a better idea of what this is shaping up to look like, get a little bit more of an X by Y for the council.
Okay. But you need to respond to the DNR sooner than that?
Probably, I'll hope.
So we at least, okay. Well, we got a minimum, we can get to that first. Oh yeah, even that, the first meeting, I believe, is still another work session.
Who's the person with the DNR guys doing?
Michelle, is Michelle White Williams?
Let's field out this one. Amber, Amber Stiles was doing a while. Michelle, I can't remember what her last name is either, but.
She moved on again, Amber?
She's bossed around, hasn't she?
I was going to say, Amber, I met Amber. He just sent her the email. It's like Michelle White, Michelle Smith.
Okay. And was there another topic while Steve is here?
Stormwater. So as we have been looking at how to best spend our $500 plus thousand of 100% money from a sponsored project, we're asking, MSA is asking for some direction on how we wanted to spend it, split between Kelly Oaks and the other project we considered being a regional stormwater contention on Conlins property. So they were, the DNR are really pushing us to do a lot of native prairie in Kelly Oaks, which is not my favorite thing for a couple of reasons. A, it doesn't work well with the disc golf. So we're just limited on where you can put it and the maintenance requires a high level of maintenance, which would include, like I guess if you hired, literally go out and squirt bottles, like squirt circumnied plants and then like leave the native flowers. And I get the outright giggles thinking about Dean out there doing that. But. And spray the native flowers. So most places like Agri, they hire people to do that for you because nobody in there right now is going to do that. So, but again, the DNR really wants, and in this case their boss doesn't say, I would grant money a certain amount of that. And they're very reluctant to tell you exactly how much, you know, like, tell us how much we need, we will find a place to pack that much in. And that's not really how they want to roll. You're like, well, just keep in mind, they explain the benefits, yeah, yeah, I know. How much do we need to pass for your test? So I reached out to Eric Schmeckel because they love Eric and if you can get Eric on board, they will follow suit. So he asked, he actually asked, Nicole, I just really want to know how that regional project is going because he sees that as a huge benefit and he had a complaint from somebody. And he had a complaint from somebody who used to be a council member maybe that lives like south of town now.
No, no, that's, uh, he was not council member, uh, what's his name?
Eric Martin?
No, no.
Was he something?
Yeah, he was a county...
Oh, that's right, that's right, yeah.
Well, that's really going to bother me.
So anyway, yeah, so he was really interested in that project and he mentioned that it was possible.
Yep.
Yes. Possible that Catfish Creek could maybe get reinvested into the Kelly Art Oaks project so then we would have, you would lose all of our sponsored project money on regional stormwater project. But we have to pass the stormwater ordinance for that to even be an option. So we talked about this, I think it's the same thing we talked about the metals also 10 months ago. So I...
Thank you, Coop.
Reached back out, so Steve and Eric worked together in Asbury related items and on their stormwater.
Yeah, he enrolled us on the city stormwater committee.
So I know last time when I brought it up, you guys asked us some questions about specifically about how the ordinance would change things and I failed to give you an adequate answer. But Eric is coming to the council meeting on Tuesday, wants to talk to you guys again and maybe you would like to see us get this passed. So I, he did have a couple objections to the draft we have though, so I had asked Steve what those meant because I don't really understand that language. And since he's coming here to talk anyways, I said, well, I'll have him to brief you subtable for Eric to be here and then we should be in a spot for, I think you guys to have all the information, need to consider that ordinance and how...
There wasn't any cost for permanent ordinance that I could see.
I don't think so, it's not so much. I don't remember.
Yeah, I don't think it's intended to be a permanent, it's more, think of it more as complying with the ordinance. And I'm sure some of you around the county was doing this countywide comprehensive plan, I think you guys were part of that. Kind of this spun out of it a little bit, this, hey, let's do this countywide approach to stormwater and Catfish Creek Management, Watership Management Authority was created and, oh, this very technical ordinance was developed. Kind of the concept that's been, I've heard it sold as, hey, let's make it even, let's make it the same everywhere we go so that it's pretty easy for the developers. And I, just as an editorial, I think, no, no, I'd rather it be easier here or easier, you know, for my clients. It doesn't have to be the same as DeWoo's. And because I don't think a one-size-fits-all approach is how you should do it. Now, as a basis of an ordinance, absolutely, by all means, and the intent is good, it is really to try to not have our soil washed away, improve water quality. So the intent is sound, but how you accomplish that on a city-by-city basis can be very different. So I think it was actually the first meeting I attended, you guys talked about this, and it was one of those everyone kind of glossed over because the ordinance is, it's pretty hard to read, you better be an engineer to be able to read and understand it, right? But it has a lot of good information. As I, if I'm working with a developer, it tells me literally everything I need to do to comply. But as what, you know, I dug into it a little bit six, eight months ago, it's like, yeah, this problem, you don't need this, you don't need these three best management practices. undefined, it just says choose three, right? Fine, you know, it had a lot of attention, but it just doesn't need to be, there's a couple of other things. Eric brought this up to me, we were in Asbury meeting last month and he said, hey, you working with them on that, I'd really like to get them to approve it. I said, yeah, so would I, but not in the current version. So, you know, I had a little talk, I think we're going to talk next week before your council meeting, just to say, you know, this is, this is a good ordinance. I also want to know how much money you kind of dug up in front of you from Watership Management Authority to pass this ordinance. Because that's kind of the leverage, it's like, pass an ordinance, be compliant with the Watership Management Authority and we'll, I'll recommend funding. Awesome, that's cool, but let's talk about what that ordinance means and whether it makes sense for you.
Yeah, because he actually reviewed that ordinance already before we...
Yeah, it's a, it's a, I mean, a good solid engineering-based ordinance, you know, and it's the law that now is adopted, city to view, the county. Asbury is as probably as restrictive as any of them, that hasn't really inhibited development there. But you guys have a lot of momentum with development, we want to see that continue, but we want to see it continue in a responsible way. So having that ordinance in place would be very helpful. You know, you've had some things happen, development occur, Dean went, he'll call up and say, hey, are they doing this? Is this what they should be doing? And maybe, maybe not, but you literally have no mechanism to tell them now because that ordinance doesn't exist. It's, you know, not to get off topic, but the same thing applies with your water, sewer, drainage, and stormwater. So you should probably think about along with this at some point, trying to get some standards in place. Because this development stuff's going to continue to happen, I saw it in Asbury 20 years ago, 15 years ago. If you don't have the mechanism to tell people no, they're going to build it and say, you got to take it now. And then a generation later, you're fixing it. So the storm, back to the stormwater, you don't want to pass a version of that, I'll work with your staff to make sure it's something that's fair for you, but still, that's just what you're hoping to accomplish.
Take a look at that 150 and 25-year chart, the water runoff and everything.
Yep.
I don't know, it's, I think it's a little late, it's old, you know, so we're going to need to update it or nothing.
Well, those charts across the country can be updated. When you start having a 100-year flood every year, they're all, you know, developments different than when they established those raining and flood charts, so I agree with you.
So, yeah, this is only time we, that may change how we spend that sponsored project money. If, because if we need to spend what we, what we currently be doing in Kelly Oaks, there like, there may not be enough left to tackle the regional project now. We don't, we don't really know that now either way, so, but...
What's the funding from the Catfish Creek group for the Kelly Oaks project, right?
Right, right. Well, and really like having, having Eric's support would just be huge for both of these projects because he's just tapped into so many other, you know, is there an option to partner with the county, could you continue to partner, you know, with Watership Authority, there are other DNR options, so it's, it could be significant. You know, either way, it'll be, whichever way it breaks, it will be a drastic...
And his motivation, make no mistake about it, is he wants to see that regional detention base done. And if he has to fund a different project to make that happen, that's kind of the answer which he's proposing.
And that, you know, being on Highway 20, you're going to have a lot of visibility and I can see they're putting a lot of money towards that, so. Just as the sponsored project, you decide over it, so...
And we talked about today, the real benefit is from the downstream landlords. I mean, you're helping them out, that's why it's a Watership improvement project. But the, I guess the more tangible benefit for you guys is it will help developers not have to necessarily worry about the stormwater on their property because you guys have already built this regional detention. So it does facilitate development a lot better and developers will favorably upon that because they, they lose some land quite often, good land if I happen to do detentions. So if you can dedicate otherwise unusable land on that kind of scale, you're going to really help that in a town.
You guys have any other questions for him? Like I said, Eric will be here on Tuesday, so you can reiterate it pepper him. He's, his perspective is just a little bit different because he, you know, his goal would be the most optimal water quality position, but I think we can find a spot in there where I mean, anything's better than nothing, so I hope he would consider to win because we can provide some definite improvements and if we can get his support, that would be great for us too, so.
And the key is to tell them you're all for it, but we want to find the version that fits us.
Alright, anything else for Steve?
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
We should come up.
Yep, no problem. The whole watch pool, I'll give you anything. More wrestling match, depends what you're into, I guess, so we'll see.
Take care. So if I take just a minute to round out the rest of the Tuesday, we've got development agreement with Petro Enterprises, we've got development agreement with Spiegel Family Realty. We covered stormwater, there's also a sending vote in addition, oh, the GO. So which, Whitney, which of these do we still need to talk about before we go into closed session?
The only other one I would bring up that I might touch on earlier is that Ulliana extension cost share. So we did, this is the, what do I need to draw a map? So currently the water line becomes across like Cox Springs and then it comes up kind of like from the southern part of my neighborhood and comes like through there and then up and then it's across Ulliana and then dead-ended where Ulliana ends. So this entire project is at Dean's, Dean's video, he needs that, really needs that loop because of, so phase two and phase three, now we have water, but the way it's fed currently, phase two has an added water pressure, so we need to get the entirety of the loop. So this is to just take the main from where Ulliana stops and it's like go past Cherry Lane and just continue with along where tied into the existing main that's on Thunder Hills Road, on the east side of Thunder Hills Road. So we did get, the cost share will be right under like $47,000 will be our share as the, which is thankfully right underneath the public bid requirement, so that turned out well. But that's, we met with them the other day, I mean, this is something that would...
Who's the other part of the cost share?
Uh, the developer, the developer.
Okay, the developer.
Yeah, so, but, I mean, so this is a main along Collector Road, so...
Yeah.
Don't leave, it's good, it's a good partnership.
Well, basically, there's not much of an option there.
Yeah, it needs to get done because it's, it is two, right? The house over, there's only one, a couple houses and two now, but they don't have, it's, you know, it's just, it's got to be...
Yeah, it's always good to keep the water circulating. If you get dead-ended like that, water pressure, but it's the, the water quality is not good, so you got to have it looped.
Yeah, and in this case, you know, it's also work that's going to be done anyways if it's everybody's benefit to get it done now rather than wait as they do their phases, so.
Do you know if Dean's planning to be here Tuesday?
I don't know if he is, but I can make sure he is.
From my conversation with him, I think there's a couple other tentacles to this regarding water pressure, specifically along Ulliana.
Like the too much water pressure?
Potentially, in the course of getting enough to phase two, overpressuring phase one, or when you do have to use the loop and flow backwards.
Yeah, so I think, and we did actually reach a resolution to that.
Okay.
Yes, but no, that was an issue. So what he's referring to is the fact that the booster station is so close to my neighborhood that in the course of boosting the Thunder Ridge, in certain conditions can like blow up Thunder Valley, phase one just because it's right there. So this loop will help that problem, but there are also going to be some pressure reducers put in in spots that they just want to make sure work protected. It's just, you know, you can't, can't really get around to that, we've got boost water a long ways away, so it's just obviously coming out real hot right at the source.
That was always a conversation, when we put in the booster station, you don't want people's water heaters to start blowing out because you got too much pressure, so...
Yeah, and Slavic mentioned that the houses have the on-demand water heaters which can take a lot more pressure than the tanks, so that's, they're going to do some targeted things.
They don't have the temperature and pressure valve, which the water tanks do.
You say so.
What'd you say? Yeah.
We are checking booster in our houses, we don't have water pressure, we don't have four pounds of water.
Yeah, I love high water pressure, but it is...
Well, we do, that's probably why.
Want that, stand under that chair, wash your shower.
Alright. So does anybody else see anything in here they want to talk about before we go into closed session?
Um, I don't, the resolution for the internal franchise fee, what's that?
That is for the, um...
Forgivable loan?
The forgivable loan for the bowling alley. So because the, yeah, the TIF unfortunately is retroactive, so we can't collect it yet. So we'll be internal loaned out of franchise fees and then we'll collect it starting in July and put it back in the franchise fees.
Okay, I have a resolution for an internal loan for Brady and Deerwood Street.
Same exact thing. So we are able to TIF the Deerwood portion of that project because it has those two commercial businesses there. And again, as TIF only lets you collect money after the project is already done. So we are internal loaning, in this case from water, so it all, it goes then, so in this case, it'll go from water to the Brady Deerwood Street project. So that fund, which is currently in the negative because of that, the fact we haven't collected the TIF yet, so we eliminate that negative balance in the capital fund and then we collect that TIF, it goes back into the water fund.
So we didn't use our street reserve because?
We did, we did, we use that for the, for the Brady Street portion. But I, do you remember when originally that project was just going to be an overlay and then we decided to do the total rebuild, which clearly, once they started tearing it out, was an absolutely right call. But that obviously increases the size of the project and at the time, that was the chosen option. Here's how we can afford this, is we can then use TIF for the Deerwood portion, and so then that allowed us to augment, to do the extra work. Yeah, no, we absolutely did use the street reserves.
Food truck trailer or ordinance or whatever? I drive by that FedEx or the old yellow building and grab a lot every day and that would be a perfect spot for a food truck trailer park.
We've talked about that whole time in the office now. Yeah, I think we'd like to, we definitely want to take the winter and get up a nice, organized schedule of food truck days. I think we have some cool opportunities we're just talking about, could you maybe do like Thursdays at lunch, they can go to industrial park and then if they move to maybe out here, then in the, you know, evenings in the summer and people walking up, you know, for your team, so...
I'm saying like, we have the ordinance, right? That we just have a set location.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Food trucks do be set up at, you got 2,000, it's Asian, it's a little, we tore it down, but I don't know if it'd be...
It'd be a good location, just a handshake, we can use it.
Well, we talked about up here, just wouldn't work for lunch, for the industrial park, for the, you know, workers that only have a half an hour.
It'd be nice and central located.
Yeah, it'd be nice closer to where they're working. But here is central for any type of evening.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's, they're kind of two different...
But I mean, if we had one location for it and it was there, evening, day, whatever, that makes it convenient as well. It's easier for them.
I think maybe also something...
They buy the, they get the ordinance, they get the fee or whatever and they know where to go. That's my big thing, if you're not going to bounce around, people have to try and find you all the time.
Where are you jumping on?
You go down...
Across from...
It was the old Yellow Freight Building?
Mine's got...
They call it the roadway building?
Yeah, roadway. It's just grab a lot sitting there now, it's got trailers sitting in it.
Adrian, is it down there anymore?
No.
It's gone.
Yellow Freight's where the police station is.
Right.
That was Yellow Freight.
Yeah.
And then they combined a roadway.
Yeah.
So they're not there anymore.
It's an empty lot. It's got some trailers. The building's gone.
Perfect place for food trucks.
And Scrabble? I didn't, I didn't think about that. They used to have a custom stone and industrial environment.
Well, there's not people driving, doing dolphins in here, it's more of a, it's a work in progress.
So this Yellow Freight never did get blacked out.
That's something to think about.
Alright, any other topics before we close or go into closed session?
Go ahead with that and ordinance then.
Well, I think it makes it more streamlined for the city as a whole, right? One set fee, one way to pay, done deal. It's clean and simple.
Alright, now I'm going to date it, I guess.
Alright, if that's the case, we can take a motion procedurally, is this right Karen? Take a motion to go into closed session pursuant to chapter 21.5. Take a motion to go into closed session, pursue it, chapter 21.5.
Make a motion to go closed session.
I'll sorry. Okay, I will stop the recording and then restart it.